Good evening, everyone. It is 7:03. Welcome to the September 26, 2019 Planning Board Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for Scenic Road at 61 Border Street. Applicant owner Lou DeFranco, would that be you, sir? Come on up. All right. Here's the story. Karen.
All right. We have gone back to the 2013 plans and it would appear that the area where the second driveway wants to go, the stone wall is on private property. We have a certi-- we got a certified plan in today that the rebuilt portion of the stone wall where the second driveway is to go is on private property as well. We've had several letters on the project, some, you know, some for, some against.
But it's private property.
But it's private property.
It's private property.
So I believe that it's not within your jurisdiction.
And I would agree.
The front face of the stone wall on the first driveway opening back in 2013 was within the, it's the edge of the right of way, so therefore would have, was in your jurisdiction.
So. All right.
Please remove it.
Well, you have to, they are going to make a motion and then we fi-- we'll file a decision with the town clerk. I mean, it's not going to be that you're gonna...
The only portion, just so you know, that if, when we do, if you guys agree to let us do it, is just the portion blocking the driveway, we'll actually make the other wall look nicer because we'll fill it in with these rocks to make it look more robust. So it'll actually look better from the road.
Okay.
And you will have to go to DPW and get a curb cut permit.
Yes.
And they could tell you, you have to go to traffic rules, too.
Okay.
So, but...
All right. Here we go.
When, I'm just, so this, this, when did this come about? Because I guess, since we have a stand planned by a land surveyor, professional land surveyor, when did they determine it wasn't, but why did they file for a?
Well, we, we didn't really look at the plan. I didn't look at the plan that carefully. It's the, the second opening, they applied, was part of the 2013 one. And when he came in, I didn't look at the plan. I didn't have a plan in front of me.
Oh, and he showed you the older?
And then, so it, you know, when we really looked at it, it's on private property. And so it looks like the original stone wall in '13 was also on private property, so it probably should have been granted back in '13.
Actually, what happened, if memory serves me correctly, that when the applicant came in for the proposed dwelling, they had the entrance and they had basically a hammerhead. They did not do a curved driveway.
Well, when they came in, it was all done anyways.
It was all done. So, um, we told them they had to put it back.
Right.
Because it wasn't on the initial plan that had been approved.
Right.
So now you are the new person and you are coming in and it has been determined that you, your wall is on private property. Therefore, I will make, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
No, I was just curious. I didn't know that until right now.
All right. I move to close the Scenic Road Act public hearing and to approve the removal of the 27 linear feet of stone wall at 61 Border Street for a second driveway access of approximately 25 feet wide for a single-family home at 61 Border Street, accessories parcel 6-2-B for applicant Lou DeFranco, on the condition that the curb cut be obtained from the DPW and any other necessary permits be obtained from the town of Situate. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So we're telling him that he can remove the stone wall on his property.
That are on his property.
Well, no, we're telling him he can move 27 feet for, for the driveway opening. Yes.
That's all he can remove.
But it's unequivocally clear that we're not voting this under the Scenic Road Act. We're not, this is, it does not apply.
No. Mr. Bajorklin, I knew you would have something to say.
Absolutely.
How could we not have you say something?
As long as the stone wall he removes is out of the layout as shown on the plan, it doesn't matter if it's two feet wide or 40 feet wide. If it's his stone wall on his property, he needs no action from the planning board at all. So whatever you vote should say, we don't have the authority to tell him how wide he can make his driveway open.
Some of the stone wall was originally very close to the right of way, and so that's why, that's why we...
You know what? He has agreed. Steve, don't money the waters. Let it go.
Just saying. There's no authority, there's no authority. That's all I'm saying.
Just saying. Let it go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set?
All right. So I, we, I don't know if we'll get this filed tomorrow, but I mean, we have to file something with the town clerk and we will...
I'll know you for next steps tomorrow.
Yeah, and I mean, you are going to definitely need a curb cut permit from DPW. So you can, you can start that, you know, and I'll close the loop with Sean McCarthy so he knows that you're going to be filing for a, you know, a curb cut for the driveway opening.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a great night. Drive safe. It's raining out.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a 7/15 surety reduction seaside at Situate.
How you doing? I'm Keith Cowan from Toll Brothers.
Okay, Pete.
Hopefully, this is straightforward, just looking for a reduction in the surety bond on seaside at Situate's project because of the progress we made. So we were looking for a reduction from the eight, approximately 8.6 million, down to 4.192. We sent off the estimate to Karen, who then forwarded it to engineers' rep, and they, you know, raised it a little bit, reduced the reduction to about 4.321 million. But then, I think, Karen, you had a recommendation of slightly higher than that.
I have a recommendation of slightly higher than that, 4.5 million, because there are several items that really aren't included on the estimate that have come up and they could amount to some sizable chunk of money. We have the new light that needs to be put up. Toll Brothers wants to do some curbing on Hathley Road. We have, we have new remediation that has come up. We have some additional drainage on Hathley Road that has come up and we're really not, really don't feel very comfortable giving any credit for the planting at the moment.
Discussion from the board?
One question, two parts. Is it the items differ? In other words, we have different items than they do?
No. I mean, what Horsley Witten reviewed, their estimate and the ones that he had questions with are the ones that are outlined in yellow.
Yep.
But through the process, additional things have cropped up that aren't in this estimate. And so, like, they have to replace the light at Hathley and Tilden. Um, no, Hathley and Turner. That was written to them in a letter. They had a, they have to do another area of remediation due to a vehicle fire last week. So it's several of the things that have come across during the construction process.
Okay. So there's not one single item that's priced much higher from one estimated to the other?
No. I mean, no, I don't think so. I mean, I think they pretty much, Horsley Witten pretty much agreed the pricing, just the percent completion was where most of the difference lies.
Got it. We're, we're fine with Karen's recommendation. Yeah.
I knew it would be. I knew it would be fine. Anybody else, Ben?
No. I would just defer to Karen and the peer review consulting engineer and if the client or the applicant's amenable to that, then...
There you go. That was easy. That was, hold it. You can't go anywhere yet.
I can't go yet?
Not yet. I move to accept Toll Brothers' request to reduce the amount of the bond being held for the seaside at Situate residential cluster project by the planning board from $8,698 to $4,500,000 for completion of the project. The current bond is to remain in effect until a new bond is provided to the town planner. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you may be. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. So somebody has to get the, a new bond.
Yep.
And so the old one, we have locked up in the safe.
Yep.
And when, when that, when the new bond comes in, you'll get the old bond back. And we'll, I'll try to get this paperwork filed tomorrow so that at least you...
I'll work on getting a, a new bond, revise the amount, too.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Well...
Well, we have old business and new business.
That's exactly what we're going to do. What is this? Okay. We have, first thing we're going to do is approve minutes. I move to approve the minutes for September 12, 2019.
Second.
Want to make, want to make an addition?
Sure. Where?
No. I'm not sure that I can tell you without looking at it.
Yeah, you look at it and tell me where you want the addition.
Do you want me to call Mr. Sharon to see if he can come in?
Yes, see if he can get himself in here.
A little bit early.
All right. While he's looking, we'll just do accounting. Well, he's trying to figure that out. I move to approve the requisition of $430 to image resolutions for reprinting of the zoning bylaws, for $2,250 to Horsley Witten for peer review inspections of Phase II seaside at Situate, for $5,763.70 to Horsley Witten for peer review inspections of Phase I seaside at Situate, for $6,090 to Harriman Associates for consulting services for the master plan, for $1,350 to Merrill Corporation for stormwater peer review at 207 Old Oak and Bucket Road, for $1,350 to Merrill Corporation for stormwater peer review at 424 Tilden Road, for $500 to Merrill Corporation for stormwater regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're waiting on?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, have you found it yet?
Yep. It's on page 11 of 23, last paragraph.
Okay. Do you want?
What I want, would like to add, just agreeable to the board, is that one member stated that the seniors deserve a center, but this one is not it.
Okay. Is there a second as amended?
Second.
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, liaison reports. Does anybody have any?
Let's see. Last, last night, some of you were there, we had the second master plan advisory committee meeting and to kind of debrief after the first public workshop. And I think, I think it was well, well-received and we had a good discussion and kind of have a game plan for going forward for the, for the remainder of the public workshops which start up. I think the next one is October 22nd.
That's correct.
We'll put out a flood of marketing to get a good turnout.
Okay.
And so that, that's, the master plan stuff is moving along well. Trying to think what else I have. Shellfish rules and regulations are going to the board of selectmen next week. Waterways and the shellfish advisory committee will be presenting as well as a representative from the State Department of Marine Fisheries. And I don't know if they'll get a vote that night, but the intent is for them to discuss kind of the rules and regs and see what concerns the selectmen have. And so that's moving along pretty well as well. And then, at the same time, I think Water Resource Committee is also going to be back at the selectmen meeting to further discuss the water offsets proposal, I think. And that's all I really have right now.
Okay. Bill, you didn't do traffic rules or anything, did you?
I did not.
No. EDC, there are two, now two new members, and I'm more of a liaison from the planning board rather than a voting member. They are moving forward with the Friends of North Situate to come up with a laun-- they have a laundry list of items in North Situate that really need to be addressed by the town, including putting in a fire hydrant on Countryway. Glenn Wilder has agreed to allow it to be put on his property, so they're in the process of hopefully getting that done in reasonable amount of time. There's also, they've replaced all of the light bulbs that had been burnt out. They're going to look into replacing or fixing some of the sleeves around the decorative fixtures. We're also looking into, or Brad is looking into, signs, banners. Half of the banners will be the C Situate logo and the other will be whatever they can come up with. What else are they doing? From CPC, and this was brought up at EDC, the canopy in North Situate will be replaced to the tune of $85,000, finished lights and what have you. So that's a done deal and it's going forward into, in the November special town meeting. And so, that's about it for that.
Okay. I went to the Housing Trust. They're looking for a new member. They're hopefully going to get another Realtor in there. I made, I have three people in mind for them that I'm in the process of calling. And they're also trying to come up with a new housing plan, which they're going to have to come to the planning board to meet with us to see how we, how they figure out how that's going to be paid for and all that difference. Not that we would pay for it, but they just, I think they want to get together with Brad on that one.
Well, I think that there is money in admin in CPC because the housing partnership, the trust, is actually part of CPC. So I think that as far as more money, I think they need to go to CPC.
Okay.
Yeah, use their admin money.
Yes.
And they were just out trying to talk to people, figure out how much it would cost and all that stuff before they did anything.
And then I was at, are you, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. I was at advisory last Thursday night and was called up front to talk about the new zoning issues. I don't know. Which we're going to talk about tonight. So I will be going back on the 4th. But it was also very interesting, and I'm not sure who the gentleman was. I think he was from Pheasant Hill, but he was with, Rich Bowen, the former town moderator, was with him. And there are three citizen articles on the upcoming, on the upcoming warrant. One is to put a moratorium on water hookups for a number of months, either through the town. The second one was through the state. And the third one was to come up with elected water commissioners. So that was an interesting presentation. And it's, I'm not sure that people really understand that a water moratorium, until we can figure out water and how much we have, we're in the process of working on the Dolan Well site while 17A is in the process of ultimately being brought online. You know, there are things that are going on. So I'm not sure, just from a planning aspect, in my opinion, that a water moratorium is in our best interests. And as far as elected water commissioners, it could turn into a popularity contest. You need people who know what they're doing and how to do it. We do have basically the Water Resource Committee. John Clarkson, at one point, was the chair of it, and he worked for the state and he was excellent. So whoever is, that committee actually could serve as, in conjunction with the board of selectmen. But the problem that, that one could see is that regardless of what recommendations are made to the board of selectmen, doesn't mean they're going to take them.
Right.
And that's an issue. That is a real issue.
It may be possible they can't react to it. It may be possible that they can't react to it. If they, they can't go through and create an elected position without changing the charter.
That's right.
And then the charter has to be changed. The question is whether it's an amendment or whether it's...
An all-out revamp.
Complete re-rule.
Yep. So that's going to be an interesting time at town meeting.
So that was the advisory board that wanted that?
That was an advisory board. Ah ha. He is here for...
He's, he's with Paul, is Paul, Paul's coming, right?
Yeah, he's coming.
Yeah.
So, that's probably...
Is this Curtis Estates?
Yeah, this, he's Curtis Estates, yeah.
Perfect.
So...
Yeah. Thank you for having me, sir.
Thank you for coming early.
I would have called you today if I had, if I had realized that we, that everything was going to take so short right up front.
That's all right. That's all right.
Do we need the rest of these individuals or can we have Greg start?
Paul was, Paul was willing to come. I mean, he was, he's probably on his way. I'm, I'm sure he's on his way.
Sounded like he was on his way when he called me.
Right. So, I mean...
I was just a mile up the road, so...
So I'm sure that, you know, let's give him another minute or two and...
All right. Why don't we talk a little bit about the planning and development report? Or do you want to put that off?
Well, I can do that now. I mean, so we have been summoned to advisory or next...
On the 4th?
On the 3rd.
The 3rd, 4th?
3rd, next Thursday night. So to, you know, review the zoning articles with them. I've given them exactly what was, what you got and I've indicated that potentially after tonight, we'll have recommendations for the town meeting. We remain very busy with multiple stormwater permits, accessory dwellings, and some other big projects as well. We're trying to slowly start working our way, cleaning up some old projects as well. Trying to work on, starting to put together, you know, some changes for the fee schedule, which we're going to need because there's no PDD anymore and now we have VCN. So we're working on that and I have another draft of the stormwater regulations that I just got end of last week, but I've forwarded on to the conservation agent who is, you know, on vacation so that she can take a look at it before we decide. Then the next step is a whole working group meeting before we come to the planning board. And that would be a public hearing. Changing the fees would also be a public hearing. So we remain pretty swamped. We, we got the first of the four definitive plans in that were to freeze the zoning in the, from, in the Village Center Neighborhood District. So they will, I mean, if they, if they intend to freeze the zoning, then they will have to be following up. The definitive has to be filed within seven months of the date of the preliminary plan. So seven months is closing in quickly, but it, they have time.
So you, you got some plans in?
I got one set in.
Does it look like the one that first came in?
Yes.
Is it completely different? Okay.
So, I mean, we remain, we remain busy. And we are still, we're supposed to be getting a couple of projects in the VCN, too. You know, we've worked the application and, you know, if you guys have any comments from the application from the training session, you know, we'll take those and incorporate, you know, whatever changes. But we're using that application now and it forces the applicants to think about what's on their plans and the project.
Which they should.
Yeah.
Ah, the door just closed. These long pauses can be difficult.
Please do not adjust your set.
Don't. All right. You're going to have to start. I can't wait any longer for himself.
Sure. For the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering. I was asked, I think, to come here tonight and give the board an update on the septic system at Curtis Farms. We've submitted a septic design plan with the Situate Board of Health that varies compared to what was presented by Ross Engineering from when they did the permitting. Up here on the board, this is a picture of kind of the overall subdivision as you approved. It's a 16-lot subdivision, as you know, made up of the two cul-de-sacs. Within the roadway is the sewer piping that collects the sewage out of each of the houses and it directs it to a common septic system down here at this location. All of the sewer piping remains the same with the new, with the new septic layout, so it'll still be all collected within the street system and directed to this area. This is a sewer lot that was laid out on the subdivision. But what has changed is on that sewer lot is the type of leaching system. The leaching system is the piping that's below the ground that allows the water to infiltrate back into the soil. This board here on the right demonstrates, this is in blue, this is what the original proposal called for. It was approximately 26,000 square feet of soil absorption area. It was a conventional system made up of what are called leaching chambers. This is a sample of a leaching chamber. Very common system, used all the time for new construction, but there is a better way to design the system, I think a more efficient way to design the system. And that's what we submitted to the Board of Health, which is the system on the left. As you can see, the footprint on the left is smaller, it fits entirely within that septic lot, so we're not asking for any changes of any approvals on that lot. That lot stays exactly as it is, as a septic lot. But the piping underground here, this is what's called a drip dispersal system. And a drip dispersal system essentially is, it replaces those chambers with a series of tubes like this. These are half-inch diameter tubes. I have a couple pictures here. We have about 50 of these systems throughout the South Shore that I've designed. And this type of system, basically along this tubing, you lay the tubing out. Every two feet along the tubing is a little drip hole. And with a pump operating the system, what happens is, is those drip holes become pressurized and then they let out a small amount of water at each of those drip holes on a regular two-hour cycle. The benefits of the system, it's in a smaller footprint, it's also smaller of a height. The system that was approved here with this layout was originally a mound that was about seven feet in height. With the system on the left with this drip dispersal system, it's only about a four-foot high mounded septic system. It is a system that's fully approved by the Massachusetts DEP for general construction. You're allowed to use it for new construction purposes as well as repairs on your house. So this is the plan that we had submitted. The grading on it is well within the boundaries here of the septic system and it doesn't alter any of the drainage coming off of this lot. There is a detention area down in here, which, if you look at the system that was originally proposed, any water coming off the lots of the subdivision would go around the septic into that drainage. That's the... That's the same case with our proposed septic system. So that's the update on where you stand. The Board of Health is reviewing this, but I expect their approval of this system.
Karen?
Yeah, the Board of Health hasn't gotten to it yet. Um, they have forty-five days in which to respond, so they're already into their forty-five-day, um, period. Um, and I checked with them, I checked with them, you know, yesterday, and they hadn't, hadn't even gotten to it. It would appear that this is less, um, there's less fill to be brought in for this system, so that would be less obtrusive, um, to the environment. When you say that the water's distributed through the pump, the pump is in the, the little chamber, the house across the street? I mean, that, that's, and that's, um, is that brought, does that have an emergency generator or something? Or a backup power supply in the event that, um...
So the, the pump systems are required to have a minimum of twenty-four hours of storage, um, in case of a power supply. That's the same of, of all septic systems, and it does comply with that. It's the same pump, uh, whether you go with this system or the chamber system.
Now, is there a grinder with this?
No, these are not grinders. This is not sewage. All of the houses have their own septic tank, so that takes all the solids. This is purely just the liquid.
And so everyone is responsible for servicing their own, um, septic system?
Their own tank.
Their own tank, as it were.
Yeah. The drip system here does require a, um, maintenance contract. The provider of the drip tubing, a company called Oaks and Inc., um, would be coming out and doing, um, bi-annual inspections on the system and operating and maintaining it.
Hasn't inspected it?
Sure. So the inspections are basically, um, out in the soil absorption area, there's, um, filters that are placed in line with the drip tubing to make sure that there's no...
Okay, so you've got access points.
Access points, yeah, so we'd be looking in those filter areas. They'd also be checking the pumps, that there's adequate pressure.
I just have one, one concern about this, but you'll be able to answer. So there was a condition, you may be aware, there was a condition in the permit, in the landscape plan, to replicate kind of the mixed wildflower and grass meadow that existed in front of the old farmhouse there, and that was to be done on the, um, septic lot. So I was just making sure that that still can be done. I mean, I mean, nothing deep-rooted, but like, uh, basically a mixed native grass, wildflower, meadow.
Yeah, that's, there's no problem planting that over the system.
Okay.
Yep.
So the Board has to decide if you consider this as a field change. Nothing's officially been filed with the Planning Board yet. This is an informal discussion, but, um, as it is getting late in the season, um, I suggested they come in to get your opinion first. It, it is less environmental impact. I have written a motion to accept it as a field change, you know, after, it has, kinda has to be filed first, but these would put parameters on it, if you're, if that's what the Board wants to entertain.
Greg?
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused on the procedure. As, fill me if I'm wrong. The Planning Board doesn't approve septic systems. The Board of Health does.
We understand that, but this is not what we had approved in our initial, um, special permit.
So...
So this is, this is a change?
It's a change to the subdivision and change to the, the plans, the plans, et cetera, that we're on, and that's what the Planning Board is approving, and that, it's made clear in here that the Board of Health shall approve the design of the septic system prior to implementation. We don't, we're not approving the septic system. We are, the Board approves the grading and those type of changes, so it would be a change to the subdivision, and one of the things that we definitely are gonna wanna see is how the grading ties into the surrounding area, because the approved, um, septic design is, the top of the, um, berm, we'll call it mound, is at elevation thirty-seven. The middle portion of the, um, proposed one now is at thirty-five, so there had, there's gonna have to be tie-ins to the grading from the lots all around, and I would suggest that that be part of it as well. And, you know, we want to have our consulting engineer look at the grading and just make sure everything's okay, and as Ben pointed out, we have, um, we had the grass, and so that was, um, that I put in here as a suggested, you know, condition, too. We're not approving the actual septic, we're not approving the septic system, but, you know, it, it is a change to the approved subdivision and special permit plans.
Okay, understood.
So it's gotta be officially filed, but if the Board accept, well, if you know the Board is gonna accept it as a field change, essentially with the conditions, then whenever the Board of Health gets it all approved, you can be in the process of getting, you know, having it all ready, getting the grading, you know, together, so that it can be looked at by our consulting engineer.
I think, too, you would've had our consulting engineer come out and look at the original, anyway. So it's just, you're changing it, basically it boils down to the Board of Health. We just wanna make sure that it ends up being what we want it to be. It protects the town, and it protects you guys.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
What, go ahead, Nate, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, go ahead.
What prompted the change, or the potential change?
It's, it's several factors. One, it's a significantly lower mound as you pull into the entrance of the subdivision. Uh, it's significantly less filled, it has to be brought onto the site. You know, there's multiple ways to design septic systems. I personally am very familiar with this type of system, the drip system. I spoke with the contractor out there when they were looking at building the other system, and, you know, kinda inquired whether they had thought about doing the drip type of system. The drip type of system is the method that is preferred now by the DEP, um, because it gets all of the effluent up higher in the soil profile, where you have more aerobic bacteria for treatment. And so it seemed, not only from a, there's a little bit of cost savings with the fill, there's aesthetic savings with the reduction in the mound, it seemed like it wa, it made a lot of sense, and so that's the direction we went.
How does it get higher if the mound is lower?
The, the piping itself is closer to the ground surface than with the traditional system.
Okay, so it's actually deeper?
No, these, these chambers here, um, because of the height of them, okay? They're, the height of that chamber is a sixteen-inch-high chamber, and then there's a foot of fill that gets placed on top of that chamber. So if you look at the drip tubing, the drip tubing is only a half-inch diameter tube, and over that tube is anywhere from six to nine inches of cover over it. So you automatically, right off the bat, you're saving almost a foot and a half of cover over it, which allows you to reduce the mound height down.
Okay.
How much above the, um, groundwater table is it?
Required to be four feet.
All right, so that, that part still stays the same?
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Um, I have no objection to this. Want, as a field change?
Great.
We just want it to work properly. That's all.
We all want that, yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay.
And if you see any other changes, you gotta wait, yeah.
All right, move to find that the potential grading change to the soil absor, absorption system will be a field change, as there are less impacts to the environment, with less fill to be brought in, and move to, to approve the, and move to approve the change subject to the following conditions. One, the Board of Health shall approve the design of the changed septic system prior to implementation. Two, the installed system shall be in substantial conformance to the system approved by the Board of Health. Three, the Planning Board's consulting engineer shall review, review the proposed site design for grading and drainage to verify there are no additional impacts to the subdivision and special permit conditions. Four, a forty-scale plan of the soil absorption system and how the grading ties into the surrounding lots shall be provided to the town planner for review and approval prior to any work on the soil absorption system. Five, the soil absorption system shall remain as a field grass area as specified on Sheet Twelve of Twenty-two. No substitutions are permitted as the soil absorption system was indicated in the findings of fact to increase the perceived open space. Okay? Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I got you the question.
Yes.
I got a couple, yes. Why wouldn't I switch four and three around?
You can. I mean, I want, yeah, we want the plan before it's given to the consulting engineer.
All right, so we'll just switch them.
And what, what's the advantage of doing it as a field change?
I think maybe, correct me if I am incorrect, Karen, this means we don't have to schedule a full-blown hearing.
That's correct.
Which would put, um, this way out, probably into November?
If, if you decided it was not a field change, and it was a modification to the subdivision and special permit, there would have to be a public hearing with notification, just, you know, twice in a paper of local circulation, so from when it's filed, it would take a minimum of about a month to get on the, um, hearing docket. They would like to be installing the septic system this fall, and the Board has kinda previously said, you know, you guys want septic system installed, too. So that's, that's why it would be a field change. It kinda appears to me that the grading, it, it is significantly less environmental impacts by bringing in a lot less fill. But it's your call, and that's why I asked them to come in, because it's the Board's call, whether it's a, you know, a field change, which is, you know, relatively insignificant, or whether it's a, you know, a modification to the plans. That, that's the Board's decision.
No, I guess I can leave it a field change.
Ben?
Yeah, I don't, I don't find this to be, um, that grand of an issue that I would be, we would need to go through the full modification process, personally, but...
Rebecca?
I agree with Ben.
Okay. The only thing we're going to do is put number four at number three, and number three at number four. So, um, I'll have a second as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So what, what's the progress down there? I hear the crash boom banging.
Yeah, house is going up. We, unfortunately, don't have one, so, we really haven't had a house at the point for cheap, I mean, we're about two weeks away from that. So, um, what's up is up, and we're, we're hoping.
We're moving along.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you, just so you guys understand, there will be a formal filing that you need to do with the Planning Board, but we're, we're not approving, you know, as you saw, we're not approving the actual septic system. But I'll write, this will be written up and sent to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you forward Peters?
Yeah, I think I did. Do they ever freeze?
Or is the pump keeping going through?
Yeah, it was supposed to be shut, yeah. Okay.
I have a basic, no, it's a septic, which isn't much, but it has to study the code at some point, is that, I'm guessing the bacteria?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm guessing the bacteria.
All right, great, that'd be great.
All right, we still have fifteen minutes to go before our public hearing. So...
You wanna take a break?
Let's take a ten-minute break. All right, we're gonna start, um, our zoning bylaw. Public hearing on zoning amendments for the fall special town meeting. Will allow the first, um, Karen, which part of this do I have to read?
Just read the, you know, the first sentence of each one, you know, the, you know, read the big, read the big and say, you know, uh...
This is the legal notice of public hearing on proposed changes to the zoning bylaw and map for the Situate Planning Board. Number one is zoning for Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District. We're amend, we will amend the zoning map. Number two, zoning for Green Bush Driftway Area, amend zoning map and zoning bylaw. And finally, zoning sign bylaw, amend the zoning bylaw. That's what we are doing this evening. We don't need a second for that, do we? No, no. Okay, Mr. Brodsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Hammerock Extension of the Village Residential Overlay District.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent South River Marina Realty LLC. The managers of the LLC are Scott Herzog and Ken DeValle, and the LLC owns the property at Twenty-One Central Avenue, which is the former South River Yacht Yard in Hammerock. Uh, the property is located within the B District, and a portion of it is located within the Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District. Uh, and the article, which the Board has kindly agreed to sponsor, is intended to place the entire parcel within the overlay district. Uh, you may remember that this was a citizen's petition that was presented at last town meeting, uh, and after last-minute objections by the Selectmen, um, it was essentially withdrawn from town meeting and referred to the Planning Board, and the Board has kindly agreed to sponsor it going forward. Uh, you're familiar with the property? Uh, there's a large unsightly metal building on it. It's been used as a boatyard and marina. And by way of history, and I'm sorry for repeating myself, but I know it's a public hearing and others may be watching at home, in two thousand seven and two thousand eight, the town undertook to rezone portions of Hammerock to promote economic development. At that time, it was recognized that the business district was underutilized, and the idea was to promote economic development by encouraging multi-family use within the business district. The town hired zoning consultants who drew up the map for the overlay district, and importantly, the entirety of this parcel was actually included within the overlay district. I, I do have a blow-up of the proposed zoning map change, and just by way of explanation, uh, the business district, and what's confusing about this is you can't just see the ratio, Marshfield Avenue, uh, Central Avenue. The property's T-shaped with frontage, both on Marshfield Avenue and Central Avenue. The red is the underlying business zoning district, and the present configuration of the overlay district is this hatched bright green area. And so you see that, uh, that portion of the property, the waterfront portion, was excluded, and I'll explain to the Board how that came about, but that presently, this portion of the property and this portion of the property are actually in, uh, in the district. But as I mentioned, during the, uh, during the, the, uh, bylaw process, the entirety of the property was actually placed within the overlay district. However, when the article was workshopped, uh, there were several people who, uh, wanted to see the, uh, at least the waterfront portion of the property excluded from the overlay district. One of those people was the current operator of the boatyard who leased the property. Uh, but in any event, I, I think there was a desire to, uh, to preserve the existing uses of the property. In any, in any event, the, as a result of that, uh, when the map was finalized and approved at town meeting, the waterfront portion of the property was excluded from the overlay district, and we're trying to put it back into the overlay district as originally intended, uh, by the, uh, by the town's planners. The, uh, the present owners of the property want to maintain the marina. It's a valuable asset, recreational asset for the community, but candidly, there's no need for a boatyard and a large boatyard building on the property. There's simply no demand for those services any longer. And so, uh, the, the owners would like to explore other opportunities, including potentially multi-family development, perhaps similar to what's, was done, uh, next door to this property. Um, and the only way they really can do this is if we can put the property back into the overlay district. Um, and so that, that in sum and substance is the purpose of the article. It's entirely consistent with the intention to promote, uh, the revitalization of the business district by allowing multi-family use, um, in the overlay district, and the, uh, it's simply a zoning map change at present to... And it's simply a zoning map change at present to, for the owners, the ability to do something different with the property. There is no project that's presently been proposed. Obviously, at the appropriate time, if indeed there's going to be a future project, that would have to go through the entire permitting process, presumably also including site plan approval of this board. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Karen?
This is really just the expansion of the Hammerock Village Overlay District to include the full parcel of 72-19-5. As the planning board decided when it was rezoned in 2008, that this part, this portion of the area that wants to be included now was taken out. So, it's really just including the whole parcel.
Discussion from the board, Rebecca?
I agreed last time to put it back in, I think we should still do it.
Ben?
Obviously, we've seen this a bunch before, my two comments are the same, that I've said, before this, first is, before this graphic goes to town meeting, just add the bridge in.
Yes.
Because it's very, people are going to say, where is this, what's going on? So it's going to be much, when you see that, it'll be much more obvious where the parcel is located. And then my other comment is just for, obviously this zoning change will potentially lead to the redevelopment of that parcel, and I would just urge that the future, or current or future owners, take advantage of the mixed-use provision of the Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District, so that we can retain, with the frontage on Marshfield Avenue, retain some sort of commercial enterprise and kind of keep that, the intent of that area as like a walkable downtown area of Hammerock. That's my only comment.
Thank you, and the one fact that I failed to mention was the fact that you had asked us to conduct a neighborhood meeting, which we did on August 29, and we did, I believe, provide the minutes of that meeting to the board. And that was one of the concerns of a resident there. They'd like to see something other than just a marina and multifamily. And so we're taking those thoughts to heart.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I'm all set. I was originally here when we took it out and think it belongs back in.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone in the public have something that they would like to say? Nothing, okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
It's not done yet. We're quick, but we're not that quick. I move to approve the proposed zoning amendment to extend the Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District to include the entire parcel of land at 72-19-5, and to amend the zoning map as such. Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's the motion now.
The next is? Green Bush.
All right, so what we, the Green Bush Village Center Neighborhood District was adopted by the town meeting last spring. In the meantime, since it's been adopted, we have had some people trying to use the bylaw, and it's been a little, it's been a little challenging. And there were some issues that needed to be changed by the Attorney General's approval letter. So, the changes to the bylaw reorganization, it's done into a more user-friendly version. Definitions for the VCN buildings, like gas-backwards and live-work are now in the definitions sections where everyone wants to go to begin with. The map changes are identified in Section 320. Section 420, the table of usage, is corrected for the AG's comments to include childcare facilities in all districts. Excuse me, we're adding some clarifications that mixed-use buildings, cottage courts are allowed, and boat storage in a portion of the coastal community. I'm losing my.
Bringing her to tears.
Kind of, we're right here, I summarized.
I'm not going to go in any great detail, I think.
Yeah, I'll do it, give it to me.
Well, I think before we, I mean, I could try to read these things. I think, you know, we passed, you know, the town passed a very comprehensive zoning update with Green Bush in the spring. This is intended to be some kind of, you know, we've had, you know, we've attempted to use the bylaw with the redevelopment. And we just identified some kind of housekeeping and administrative updates that we needed to make. Karen mentioned, you know, putting things that were already in the text or the body of the bylaw into the definitions, you know, streamlining some of the tables to make them more user-friendly. It's items like that, it's all included in the package that you have, it's included in the version that's online, available in physical copies at various locations in the town, as included in the notice. So it's, again, it's not any substantive changes, it's really, again, just kind of, after trying to utilize the bylaw, we just realized that this would make it easier to understand, simplify it a little bit, and then just, you know, make the few tweaks that were necessary.
Basically, it's housekeeping.
It is housekeeping, yeah, we call it administrative updates, yeah.
Okay. Discussion from the board? Bill?
No.
Rebecca?
Nope.
No.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I'd like a little more background on is the, I guess, why boat storage in the NDTV? Or NRN area, or, sorry, I'm getting confused. Where are we adding boat storage back in, and why was it not there originally?
It's added in because we had some conversations in the office, people were inquiring. We're a coastal community, and we have minimal boat storage in town. And it's a site that currently has boat storage on it, so it became non, you know, non-conforming.
Right.
And so we're adding it just in the one district where it is now.
Again, those are none of the districts that we're encouraging kind of more dense, mixed-family, multi, you know, multi-use properties. Again, it's acknowledging what's there now. As Karen says, we are a coastal community, we're trying to not completely eradicate a use that we currently allow. Although we don't want to see it all through Green Bush, I think in this one limited sub-district, it makes sense.
Right. Okay.
So the NDTV district?
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
All set?
Yeah, I guess.
MIPC also looked at it as well, which was helpful, because they're also looking on North Conway and. North Conway.
Yeah.
It's not New York, sure. I'm going to the pantry next week. And, you know, that was a helpful process for us, because they're also thinking about, you know, including it in the Village Center Neighborhoods framework. So, they had some, you know, good suggestions in terms of making it more efficient, reorganizing some things here and there. But ultimately, it's, you know, the whole initiative here is to make sure it's user-friendly for people that are developing in any of these new VCN districts. And that's what we're trying to achieve. I mean, this obviously was a very ambitious series of amendments, you know, back in the spring. And so there was, you know, some language here and there that could have been better integrated into the overall bylaw. That's what we're trying to do now.
Okay, just identify yourself with a record.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Ted Brovitz.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and there's no public. All right. I've sat through many of these renditions, so I'm all set. All right. I move to approve the proposed changes to the bylaw, reorganizing portions of the Village Center and Neighborhood District to provide clarifications, make more user-friendly, and address comments from the Attorney General with the acceptance of the zoning changes made at the annual town meeting in April 2019. Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
The sign bylaw.
The sign bylaw, shall we all rapture? Okay. All right, we have a sign bylaw, and is there any, Brad, are you going to do the sign by?
I will, I'll save Karen's voice, and I can read this part of her notes. So, essentially, what we have proposed, again, before you tonight, and your packets available online, available in physical copy throughout town, are track changes showing what, essentially what we're trying to do is reclassify signs allowed in residential districts. What we have now is we treat a variety of signs differently, whether it be for rent signs, political signs, signs for churches or civic groups. What we'd like to do, just to try and be equal and fair to everybody, is put them into one category of temporary signs and treat them all the same. And that's, again, I think, trying to be more in compliance with the recent case law and how these different signs are treated. So that's, again, straightforward, just trying to make sure that we treat signs within residential districts the same. Right now, our bylaw, again, treats them a little differently in terms of how big they can be, how long they can be up. We're just trying to make that consistent and fair.
Okay.
So if there's errors, I mean, this is, you know, this was my attempt to do that. I am working with council on the exact language, we modeled it after towns that have tried to do the same thing, and have successfully gone through the Attorney General review process. So if there's minor tweaks that we need to make based on Cindy, Town Council's review, we will. But again, it was essentially trying to strike out political, the kind of other call-outs that were kind of different, whether it be for rent, for lease, and then also the civic group church signs, and then lumped them into temporary category.
Okay, I have a question. Go ahead.
Well, maybe it's been taken out, so let me, let me double-check.
It's temporary signs, 710.1. I think that's what you're going to want, too. No more than two temporary signs may be displayed on a lot, neither of which shall exceed eight square feet. A temporary sign shall not be displayed for more than 30 days. But then you go down to C, and it says for a period of time beginning 60 days before a municipal, state, or federal election. All right, well, is the difference? And ending three days after the date of the election, there shall be, and there shall be no maximum number of temporary signs permitted. Does that mean that somebody can put 10 signs on their front lawn?
So. Wait, can it be 60 days or 30 days?
So what is it?
Well, for a period beginning, so again, this is language that we modeled after, I believe it was Hoppington or Holliston, that had similarly, you know, modified their sign bylaw to try not to drastically treat this difference. So it's 60 days prior to any of those types of elections. Then three days afterwards, you got to pull them, and then there's no max on your lot that you can have. And you see that anyways, you see, you know, and we're buying for planning board, and you'll see 10 in your own front yard. Now, I'm just, I'm saying for example, you'll see that throughout, you know, kind of any town.
Doesn't that contradict A?
I'm wondering if C, see, the C, would provision C?
Is municipal and state.
It must, those signs have to reference an election, whether it's a ballot question or a person running for office or something, right?
As opposed to somebody putting up.
Joe's construction.
Right, or Plymouth paving puts out two.
Yeah, I can get clarification, again, this language comes exactly from something that has gone through the Attorney General review.
I really don't want to continue this.
Yeah, no, I know.
I just, I think it has to say something about a sign for an election in C. I don't think it's clear enough.
Right, I think maybe if it said, for, put, before a municipal, state, or federal election, for a period of time beginning 60 days before a municipal, beginning 60 days before, and ending three days after the date of the election, there shall be no maximum number of temporary signs permitted.
Is that saying the same thing, though?
But it needs to describe that they're signs specifically.
Yeah, but that's the catch there, you can't, you're trying to lump them all into one category. I guess, under this, you could potentially put up 50 Joe's plumbing signs before and after an election. But to treat them fairly, but acknowledge the reality that you do have elections, and there's going to be a proliferation of signs before and hopefully just a few days after the election. I'm assuming this is how they attempted to treat it that way, and ours does not, and I think that's why ours was challenged by the ACLU. It said political signs, and it had, I think, an unreasonable amount of time, and it also called out folks that had done well in a primary, or I forget the exact language that's in there now, but. So we, again, tried to model our language off of something that survived Attorney General review in terms of something that can be upheld.
How about if we said political signs?
No.
Nope.
No, we can't.
What if, what if you said, there shall be no maximum number of temporary signs referencing said election permitted?
That's getting a little dicey, too.
Yeah. We can strike the whole thing if you don't want, if you don't want any cap, or you can just say three days after a.
No, no, I think that's a rule, you have to have them down, three days, that's a, that's a.
No, no, I'm saying, but if, maybe you would just put a limit on time for all of them. But again, that's a little awkward, because if someone has a.
I think this, I think that rule is when you can put a sign up as a state rule, isn't it?
I don't know.
I think it is.
In terms of?
When a political sign can go up before an election.
No, because this is new for us. We had 30 days previously, there's no.
Oh.
And so that's why it's codified, if it was a state rule, we wouldn't need to have a zoning bylaw regulating.
I mean, I can, if this has been vetted, and it's, you know, I can live with this, I think it's implied. Personally, but I do think it is, it is a little ambiguous with A, but.
I think it's implied, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, it's implied. I think what we're trying to do is put ourselves in a better position for the upcoming election season, to not have something that's challengeable and unfair. And if there needs to be further modification, we can certainly do that for the spring town meeting.
Yeah.
Just use this, you know, kind of as a temporary fix, certainly better than where we were, but might need still some work.
The only, I did have one other comment, sorry.
Go for it.
Hate to do this.
No.
But it's on B.
On D?
Yeah, on B, it just says one banner for each establishment. Is establishment also a household?
No.
It's business.
Business.
That, I just was curious, that's the only time that kind of showed up, that that would only be for.
Not, displaying for more than 30 days, well, there are some that are already in violation of that, but we won't go down that road. So. Anything else? And there's no public? Okay. I move to approve the proposed changes to the sign bylaw to provide necessary legal adjustments to comply with current case law by providing for temporary signage in all residential zones and removing church and civic group signs. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I have to read these?
All right, so then you're going to move to close the public hearing.
All right, move to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have three.
The sign.
Reports to town meeting. So if you want to look at them tonight, then we can, you know, know where we stand on that. If you don't like the exact wording, then we can always bring them back at the next meeting. But it'll give us something that, when we go to the advisory board next week, we can say that you've had the public hearing, you've voted favorably on all these things, and, you know, these, the reports just basically summarize your vote.
Right. And then we can decide who is going to present them. For town meeting. Brad?
Chair, do you mind if, if it's convenient for your schedule, if we take like a couple-minute recess, just to?
Actually, we're going to do one thing better. I think we're done this evening?
Well, you, I mean, you should vote these.
All right.
You should read them and vote, that's what you've done always in the past.
All right, then I'll read them, and then we can vote them. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on September 26, 2019, and closed on the same date. On September 26, 2019, the board voted unanimously to support the passage of the article at November 5, 2019, special town meeting. The changes to the Village Center and Neighborhood District zoning bylaw provide a more concise, user-friendly version by reorganizing some changes to the Green Bush Driftway area adopted at annual town meeting in April 2019, by relocating definitions and design standards to the appropriate sections of the. to the appropriate sections of the bylaw, clarifying the table of use by addressing comments from the Attorney General approval letter regarding childcare use facilities, and correcting typographical errors and other clarifications to wording for ease of use. The planning board supports this article. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion, sorry.
You want discussion?
I might have to admit, there's just, this is the report that goes to town meeting, right?
Yes.
Just my name as an E on the end. So just edit the name.
Fix that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is about the zoning bylaw. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on September 26, 2019, and closed on the same date. On September 26, 2019, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the November 5, 2019, special town meeting. The changes to the bylaw are a necessary legal adjustment in the bylaw to comply with current case law. The change in the bylaw is a reclassification of signs in all residential districts to temporary signs and removes church and civic group signs. The planning board supports this article. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Of the overlay district, the planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on September 26, 2019, and closed on the same date. On September 26, 2019, the board voted unanimously to support passage of this article at the November 5, 2019, special meeting, town meeting. The changes to the zoning map will allow for the extension of the Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District to extend to the full parcel identified on the town's situat assessors map as parcel ID 72-19-15, as was originally proposed in 2008, when the area was first rezoned. The expansion of the Hammerock Village Residential Overlay District to this parcel would allow for potential redevelopment of the site. The planning board supports this article. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is that it, Karen? I'll entertain both, Bill, whoever's motion.
George Allen.
George Allen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emma, we're all set. We're done. Okay, Brad?
All right. No state law, no. I thought that was.
Ah.